Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Berkeley County Board of Education meeting this Tuesday, September 18th. I call this meeting to order and I declare that a quorum is present and that the media has been notified. Do we have a motion tonight to approve the agenda?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Before we get to item C on the agenda, Ms. Wofford, Sally Wofford's granddad passed away today. He was a pastor in St. Stephen for 51 years. Preached all the way up until August and then recently was put in hospice. He was kind of the figurehead of the Wofford family and so she hates that she can't be here tonight. But she's obviously got some very important things to attend to, so please keep Ms. Wofford in your thoughts and prayers this evening. At this time, I move to Agenda Item 1C, which is the discussion of implementation of the capital plan. Dr. Tony Parker, you are recognized.
I'm not sure which one of those you're talking about.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We appreciate you chairing this meeting tonight. And wanted to give the board some information regarding the facility plan and some updates, initially based on the plan itself. And I wish I could see that far. Yeah, there you go. Okay, we're there now. All right, you're going to see a few changes to the plan here from the standpoint of the updates. You will be receiving your first quarterly update in October and that will include all of these changes. I just want to give you some basic information on this and then get into the five-year facility This information basically looks to the 12th day enrollment here in Berkeley County and we'll bring this back up again so you can look at it and it'll be in Mike Miller's presentation as well. And pretty impressive numbers as far as the district's growth. And that will be something we'll focus on briefly here in a minute. One of the things I wanted to show you as far as the changes, in our last presentation with each school, we were showing you the total numbers as far as enrollment and the capacity, design capacity, under or overcapacity. What we have done here is we're going to give you a grade-by-grade background that helps you to understand the specifics as far as the schools and an understanding of what kind of growth is occurring in each area. This is the alternative school and really is not meaningful to this presentation. We'll go to one of the regular schools. Berkeley Elementary School. And if you look here, your four-year enrollment, your kindergarten enrollment at 170, first grade enrollment at 221, second grade at 162, for a total enrollment of 627. You've got a capacity of 680, you've got seat capacity of 53 students there. That's going to be the information we're going to give you on every school. And we're going to break it down by grade levels. That gives you more of an understanding of the earlier grades that are coming into the district and it helps you to kind of plan for the future. And certainly Mike Miller is going to point that out to you when he gets up here. Also, there are going to be some major changes. If you look at the first presentation that we gave you, there's going to be major changes on this document as far as looking at maintenance and repairs and at operations. There are increases in this with CBRE and all of that's going to be reflected in this total information here. Each quarter, that information is going to be adjusted. Here's Berkeley High School, the grades that are being served and the numbers at each grade with a total of 1761. You've got a capacity, design capacity of 1,800 and undercapacity of 39 students. That information is going to be critical for you to have in your decision-making moving forward from here. As far as the larger document, that's what I wanted to point out to you. You'll get the final report in October and then every quarter after that, you're going to get a report with updated information on every school in the county.
Dr. Parker, I have a question.
Sure.
On the design capacity, particularly for middle and high school. We had two basically capacities of information that I saw before. One was wherein you basically had, excuse me, teachers with planning periods in their classrooms. Then there was another capacity in which you had teachers not in their classrooms for a planning period. So which one of these design capacity, is the design capacity with or without the teachers in their classroom?
The design capacity addresses the fact that you're on a four-by-four schedule and you're pulling out one-fourth of the school based on the scheduling. Design capacity takes into account that.
So the design capacity is less than the actual capacity of the building?
Yes, that's right.
That's what you're saying?
That pulls that 25% out.
I understand, yeah.
That looks, that if you had a six-period day, you would address it based on one-sixth of the population of the school and with a four-period day, you're basing it on one-quarter.
At any particular time during a high school day, 25% of the teachers are basically on planning period?
That's correct. All right, I'm going to end this slide and there you go. I can see it now. All right, now we'll get into the five-year recommendations. I'm going to go over this briefly with you and then I'm going to come back to it at the end of the presentation. And in here, we're talking about the issues as far as decisions that the board is going to have to make with new construction, new schools, and also with building additions, renovations, restoration projects, energy management projects, demolition projects, capital improvement, scheduled maintenance projects, and capital projects. With all of these, this is going to require the board to make decisions regarding the direction that you're going to take in the future. And I want to point some of these out to you that are really critical to the future of the district. We indicated at our last meeting that you're going to need a new middle school, you're going to need a new elementary school, you're going to need another new middle school within the five-year plan. And that's going to be pretty much addressed as far as the board is concerned, location-wise, based on the numbers that we're looking at with our forecasting. And you will see that very clearly when Mike comes up and shows you the numbers, the out-of-capacity numbers in the different schools and you start clustering that and looking at that from the standpoint of where do you need to go as far as new schools, where do you need to go as far as additional capacity in those areas? And I'm going to stop right here and come back to this after Mike does his presentation. And some of this will make more sense to you then as far as additions, as far as demolitions and with regard to these recommendations. The only thing I want to point out to you before Mike comes up is there are some critical decisions that are going to have to be made by this Board of Education. And I think first and foremost, one of the most critical decisions you're going to have to make is how are you going to pay to build schools, how are you going to pay to address the needs of the district in the future? And that's going to be a tough one. There's been conversation about a one-cent sales tax to address building, new schools, renovating older schools. There's also the idea of a bond referendum. I even mentioned today to the superintendent, the possibility of putting in a impact fee on new construction. That's an issue that needs to be, all of these are issues that are going to have to be considered by this Board of Education to come to a consensus on how do you address the growth that's going to be coming into Berkeley County in the future. And at this point, to address the growth, to address the planning as far as growth is concerned, I'm going to call on Mike Miller to come up here with Numerics. Mike?
Thank you, Dr. Thank you.
Yeah, it's hard for me to see here. Yours is...
On the right.
Oh, okay. I've got it covered up. That helps a lot. Do you see it, Mike?
It's on the right. I'll get it.
All right, if you can see it.
It's in the last here.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Superintendent, Board members. It's very nice to be here. Let's get this rolling.
There you go.
Tonight, we're going to talk about long-term membership forecasts and the impact of those forecasts on building utilization for the district. We're going to spend a little bit of time on the background data to get you familiar with how these, the machine behind the forecasts, how we look ahead using county planning and GIS data to try to figure out where the kids are going to come and when they're going to be here. And then ultimately, what kind of impacts those numbers have on your schools. Let me introduce myself. I was here a couple of months ago, I think, just briefly as, to kind of give you a view of what's to come. But my name is Michael Miller. I've been doing this business for about 15 years, more than 15 years now. I started at the Operations Research and Education Laboratory at NC State, worked with Dr. Ingram in Franklin County up there. Two years ago, I moved down to Charleston, started my own business. It's called Numerics. I'm doing a lot of the same work that I did for NC State. I love what I do and I can spend a lot more time working with districts now and not worrying about the other stuff you have to do at NC State. What's behind this school planning is a multiple assortment of tools. We're using membership forecasts, we'll learn about GIS analysis, mathematical modeling has to do with citing schools and locations that can address future growth and current overcrowding, demographic analysis, how big are the cohorts that are coming in and matriculating through the system. And as I said, I've been doing this for about 15 years now. So behind the membership forecast, we'll look at some data, including resident live birth data from the county, what the district has been doing over the last five or six years in terms of membership. And looking forward, what kind of information the development data from county planning is telling us about where children will be here over the next 10 years. We'll follow that with some assumptions of the forecast and then we'll present the forecast in full. So any good forecast of schoolchildren, school membership starts off with resident live births. So the idea here is that the numbers of resident live births five years ago give you a pretty good idea how many kids are going to show up for kindergarten five years later. That's not to say that the same children exactly that were born five years ago will show up in kindergarten, but the numbers, as you can see, the lines trace off a pretty good, a pretty good pattern. They match very well. So it's one of the indicators that we use that's fairly reliable in figuring out how many kindergarteners we're going to have. And that's where it all starts. You get your kindergartners right and the rest is downhill. For Berkeley County, the latest data that's accessible, I think they're working on their websites here, so 2017 data should be available at any time, but the latest data was in 2016 with 2,756 resident live births. So if a family was a resident of the county in 2016 and had a baby, that's how they count those, even if that baby was had in a hospital outside the county. If they're residents of the county, they're counted. So one of the things that surprised me about Berkeley County is I've worked with dozens and dozens of school districts and the impacts of the recession. You can see it a little bit here, but this is nowhere near the kind of dramatic impacts that we're seeing in many districts through North Carolina and South Carolina where you see this humongous dip after 2008, not really recovering until 2012. This is a very unusual situation for Berkeley County in that the recovery, it seems by this data, the recovery from the recession, at least in terms of resident live births, was almost immediate after the recession. Over this period, that resident live birth growth was 1.55%. We expect that to continue and the average is about 40, 41 resident live births per year increase from year to year. So another big piece of our membership forecast is historic membership. For purposes of calculation, we like to use the Day 135, average daily membership. Of course, we're nowhere close to 135 today, so we will be using Day 12 data for 2018-19. But if you look back at the last six years of Day 135 data, the district has increased by 745 K-12 students per year, 745. It's one of the most stable and certainly one of the larger districts that I work with in terms of growth. This is very impressive numbers. That equates to about 2.4% K-12 growth over the same time period. One of the interesting things about this is over the last two or three years, kindergartners actually have decreased a little bit by about 200 students. That trend seems to be reversing in 2018. So we are seeing more kindergartners this year, it appears, than we have seen over the last several years. Initial data from 2018 still shows the healthy growth. We don't see any signs of this turning around or flattening, at least not in the near term. So we're still looking at very significant growth from year to year in Berkeley County. The historic data and resident live birth data is a starting place for this, but what makes this forecast unique is we look to the future at development data using Berkeley County planning information and especially Berkeley County GIS information to try to determine how those new developments are going to impact the schools around them. What you're looking at here, I believe you can also find this on the Berkeley County planning website, these are single-family permits from '06 to '16. And the darker the red color, that's the more permits per square mile. A single-family, in this case, not counting multifamily units, which is a separate data set. But you can certainly see areas of concentration indicated by the red colors there. Blowing that up a little bit, drilling down, on top of that data, we also get residential development data. And specifically, a new development comes in, we know how many units, we have some idea of how the build-out occurs, when it's going to start, when it's going to end. And from that information, comparing that with other comparable developments in the district, we get an idea of how many kids are going to be in those new developments impacting schools in Berkeley County. So the historic data gives us a little momentum and the development data that we get from Berkeley County planning and the GIS data help us put a future on this. That's where these forecasts are developed. Does anybody have any questions on that data part?
Go back to the first, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain exactly what we are looking at and...
Well, the way the permitting process works in Berkeley County, as I understand it anyways, is fairly standard, is these numbers represent how many single-family permits were approved between '06 and '16 and aggregated per square mile. So if you divide the district into square-mile chunks and count the number of permits approved inside that square mile, that's where the different colors come from. And the darker red ones are, I can't read that, but that's 300-something, 365. It's a very large number.
Exactly. What area is that dark red represent?
See if I can zoom this in.
Kane Bay.
Yes. I don't know if I can zoom in there. Nexton down here, Kane Bay.
Twenty Jake.
Right in here.
Nexton and Kane Bay area.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And one of the interesting things we're seeing with the future data, this is data that's happened up until 2016, right?
Where's the Hanahan area? On that line?
Down in here.
The same place?
Right in there.
Where's the Nexton again?
Up in here.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. These are more of an immediate impact and likely the district is already seeing the growth from these approved permits at this time. But when you look at the future development data, you also see a lot of development down here at Philip Simmons, more in Nexton, a little bit to the north here. So this is a good snapshot of what's happening currently, but there's another future picture that the forecast will represent. So the assumptions behind the forecast you're about to see, these are intended for medium-to-long-range planning. There are other ways, better ways to look at short-term teacher allocation, for example, that kind of planning. These are really about building plans and where your district is going to be from the five-to-10-year period. Where do you need schools? Where do you need seats? As I mentioned, the forecast is built on historic Day 135, average daily membership. I thought it was important to include 2018 data for this presentation. So even though it doesn't line up exactly with the data that we have in the historical model, it's still important to have the most current data. That data will be updated and revised with Day 45 and then Day 135 data when it becomes available.
Could you expand on that last bullet, please?
Yes. As you'll see in a moment, I have some examples prepared for the board. Student assignment is, I consider it a mixture in between what I would term short-term and long-term forecasting in that if you're looking at drawing attendance boundaries for schools, one of the things to consider is not only are you dealing with current overcrowding, but are you allowing room for future growth in these new attendance boundaries? So it's not just about drawing lines that capture today's students, it's about drawing lines that hopefully look forward and try to accommodate anticipated growth. I mean, one of the things that we try to stay away from is multiple reassignments. So if you move a child, a family, one year, you certainly don't want to come back in two or three years and have to do it again because unanticipated growth. So a mixture of both short-term and long-term, short-term meaning exactly what's happening in these base areas. Do we have large kindergarten and first-grade classes or the larger classes in fourth grade and fifth grade? And long-term in terms of what can we expect from those anticipated developments? Balancing both of those viewpoints gives a successful assignment plan. For the current forecast, we are looking at resident live births to continue their pace at about 1.5% per year from 2000 to 2023. We expect the strong regional growth trends to continue. And as I mentioned, the gray, the kindergartner membership trend of decrease will reverse and it seems like it's doing that in 2018. So the models you're looking at on the screen there, the final one is the bold red one right there on the top. The other models stand for more traditional statistical models that don't really capture that future development data that you've seen. All right, this is the membership forecast for elementary schools. I know you can't see all the numbers here. I'll explain what these, and these copies, I'll make these available to the superintendent after the meeting, so you'll have Excel spreadsheets. You can go and zoom in and see everything as close as you need to. But I'll explain what's happening here. So each of the schools are listed in a row. You have the grades served for 2018-19, the capacities. For this particular table, I'm using the adjusted capacities. There was a question about capacities before, these are the adjusted ones. So in certain cases, I believe mobiles are included in that, correct? The next column is the pre-K population. A grand total there is over 1,000 pre-K kids occupying seats in these schools. And then to the right is the total enrollment or membership, I should say, over the next 10 years, beginning in 2018-19 and ending in 2028-29. It's color-coded by utilization. So if you see green, you're under 90%, I think it is, of the listed capacity. You see yellow, you're getting a little tight. Orange is over the capacity and red becomes at least 10% over the listed capacities. So you can see certain areas, Kane Bay Elementary, Bowens Corner Elementary, brand-new school. We're looking at a lot of growth in the area and anticipated being out-of-capacity in the future. Also, Nexton, we've already seen a lot of growth happening there and there's even more on the horizon. So those three schools pop out as having utilization. Goose Creek also.
It's very difficult to see what's in the red.
Yes. I have another slide that'll help you a little bit there. But moving to middle school and high school, the same, the same legend, so each of the schools with their membership forecast over the next 10 years. Again, the red ones are the ones that are overcapacity. And on the bottom chart, that's high school and you're looking at Berkeley High and Kane Bay High, the two top rows, overcapacity. The next slides will give you a better idea of what the numbers actually are representing So I call this a utilization forecast. And as opposed to the previous tables, what this tells us is the number of available seats by school over the next 10 years. So let's see if I can get a... So let's see if I can get a laser going here. Let's take a look at Bowens Corner Elementary School right here, serving pre-K through 5 with a capacity of 926. Brand-new school, day 12, membership of 225. I'm sorry, I forget what the day 12 membership was, but there's 225 open seats, this represents open seats. As you move to the right, these numbers get smaller and smaller, there's fewer and fewer open seats. And by the end of the forecast, there are a lack or a need of 406 seats in Bowens Corner Elementary. We do the same thing for Goose Creek Elementary, serving pre-K through 5, current capacity of 816. We have a lack of 149 seats currently, the number gets larger and larger, ending with about 227 shortage of seats. So I think this gives a better idea of localized crowding over the long term. And the same thing for middle and high school, let me call your attention to Kane Bay Middle School, serving grades 5 through 8 with a capacity of 1,222. As of day 12, we're looking at 79 available seats, that number goes down year by year by year. And at the end of the forecast, we're looking at about 1,000 seat shortage in that base. For the high schools, Berkeley High and Kane Bay High, starting off with Berkeley at 39 available seats, but ending off at a little more than 200 shortage. Kane Bay, starting off with a shortage of 40 and ending up with close to 500 by the end of the 10-year period. As I said, all these charts and tables will be available and you can take them home and look at them and see what the actual numbers are instead of looking at on the screen here. So what do we get from these tables? The forecast you have just seen looks at a growth, an annual growth of 759 K-12 students over the next 10 years. That's annual. So 759 averaging per year over the next 10 years. That equates to a growth rate of about 2.1% per year over the next 10 years, which is higher than the general population, slightly higher than the general population projections that we're seeing from the census. Based on the capacities in those tables, the needs for a middle school is very real in the Kane Bay Middle School, Hanahan Middle School bases, that's where we're seeing the major shortages. And a target area for that middle school can be determined, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. A need for high school capacity in the Kane Bay base and a need for at least one elementary school capacity target area to be determined. Any questions on that?
That's over the 10-year period or a three to five?
A 10-year period.
You talked about a three to five earlier, but didn't mention a high school.
Right, the high school's on the long side of this. Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. Yo, Kane Bay, Hanahan description, are you talking about two middle schools or one?
Let me get to a slide that'll help answer that question, I think. At this point, I don't have that kind of information. But the next steps for this process will provide you that kind of data. So moving on from here, it's important to get data every year, including student data, not only new student ADMs and memberships, but also student GEO codes, which tells us where the students live. We want to know about new development data and planning data, we'll be in contact with Berkeley County Planning, GIS, to get that. We need to know about new capacity needs, has anything changed since these numbers were developed back in March? And any expansions or renovations in the timelines for that? With that information, the next step is to look at location of target areas for new schools. Using the data from the forecast, can we determine where the best place to put a target area or a new school might be to relieve that overcrowding and anticipate future growth? And also, we'll look at how we can use that data to look at assignment, student assignment scenarios for overcrowding. Target areas for new schools provide solutions that address school crowding and manage future membership growth. So it's not just about taking care of what's on the ground today, it's also looking ahead and placing that school in an optimal place to accommodate that future growth. The student planning tools that Numerics has can help you balance school utilization by moving district lines. It can help you explore options for student assignment and how many families might be impacted if you try to balance two adjacent schools, for example, to try to make their utilization more even or provide overcrowding relief for one school. So let me give you an example of what that means. A target area for new school, the data that goes into this mathematical model, which schools will be impacted? Do you want to look at a district-wide scenario? Are you interested in finding which areas impact a large group of families or is it more localized? Do we want to look at just certain areas of the district and concentrate on local crowding? The long-range membership forecasts incorporate those future residential growth trends, so the circles that pop up not only look at current crowding, but they look at what's going to happen over the next 10 years. Student travel distance is minimized, we try to send the child to the closest school when you build a new school. And we also look at other additional planned facilities and renovations, expansions of existing facilities, if that's to occur. You put this into a big computer model and you end up with these school sites that are specifically located to try to address those problems for the schools that you're working in, either countywide or in localized areas. And the same model is used for student assignment planning and the questions are very similar, which areas are going to be impacted? This map represents elementary schools in a district, all the different colors represent different elementary school bases. So we decide on how big of an impact area we would like to look at to provide overcrowding or relief for overcrowding. Are there specific schools that we need to target that are overcrowded? And then the computer generates a model that accommodates those inputs, those data inputs. This model looks at transportation, accessibility and safety. If you're talking about a new school that's going to serve certain neighborhoods, how is the egress, what are the transportation and safety issues around those neighborhoods for busing and transportation, minimizing multiple reassignments, as we talked about before. Once you create these new attendance boundaries, we would like those to be stable for as long as the forecast. We don't want to move families more than once while they're at that school. And we can also consider things like demographic balance when you're actually looking at the population inside these new schools. So there's a lot of factors that can be considered when you're looking at drawing attendance boundaries for new schools. Lot of information to you. Are there any questions you have?
Early on, I asked a question about middle schools, you mentioned middle schools and in the Hanahan and Kane Bay area.
Yes, sir. Let me draw back to that.
And you said you would talk about that.
Sure.
Really two middle schools.
Two separate.
It looks that way now, yeah.
Okay.
That's based on the numbers we're looking at right now with the data that we have currently.
I was just wondering, being that the distance from those two areas is so far and so much stuff in between, like, you know.
That would be two middle schools.
Yeah, correct.
We've got a three to five year and then a 10-year, that's what I'm looking at here, is that right, guys? Three to five year and then an overall 10-year for a possible high school for the 10-year?
Well, the high school would actually fall, in looking at our forecasting, it would actually fall in the five to 10-year.
Right.
Segment.
Right.
We're looking at the schools in our five-year proposal that we presented to the board, that we would have two middle schools there, but we wouldn't have a high school in the first five years of the plan.
Let me ask a question about attendance boundaries because it's intriguing to me. Given the fact that Kane Bay is exponentially experiencing growth, I assume that part of the project here is going to recommend some attendance boundary adjustments. If that's the case, when would these recommendations be brought to the board and would they, at a particular time, alleviate some of the current crowding conditions? And given the fact, if that does happen, would it also take into account the growth of the areas and the expansion of the new facilities? In other words, would it stay that way?
What we would provide you with is information based on the growth and the projections of growth. And we can provide you with scenarios that you could choose from, options that you could look at as far as solutions to the growth issue, growth problem. Those are decisions the board would have to make. We can give you the most optimum proposal that we can give you, but then you've got to make the call, you've got to make the decision.
Understood.
For example, and let me look at, I don't know if you really realize what we're doing with the circle, the Board of Education is going to have to make a decision based on the density of the population, how large the circle is going to be that will be generated. Because you've got to look, within that circle, you've got to look at who owns land within that circle. Who can we buy the land from or who is going to donate the land, as far as a developer, to the board to build schools within that circle? So in some cases where you've got a more densely populated area, you're going to have to expand the circle so you can acquire the land there. And Berkeley, in the areas that we're going to need schools, has got some real issues with dense population there and really dense population moving to the future. So it's real imperative that we start identifying where we're going to need land to build schools now, five, 10 years down the road, and identifying where that land is going to be located. So what Mr. Miller does, what Numerics does for us, is they provide us with the circles based on all the data that we have to determine where the location of that school is going to be. This is real critical information. And it's imperative that we look at it from the standpoint of the urgency, I think, that we have right now in Berkeley County. And I said earlier, you know, how are you going to pay for these schools? What direction are you going to take as far as paying for the schools? And the superintendent and I have talked about that at length. And that's a real critical issue that the board has to come together on where are we going to go to provide funds to build the schools that we're going to need? And there are other issues here, go back to the neighborhood areas, the school district areas. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Now, these are actual schools, school districts, individual school areas there, attendance areas. And when you start looking at these, this is the other element that Mike Miller would provide for us, is identifying where these school districts are and how are you going to reassign students within those school districts to achieve what you want to achieve? Now, I'm going to throw this out for you. One of the things that I never wanted to do as a superintendent, I didn't want to split up neighborhoods. In other words, if you had a particular neighborhood, Cambridge neighborhood over here, I didn't want to divide the neighborhood up, I wanted to shift the whole neighborhood because it gets real interesting if you've got one side of the road going to one school, one side of the road going to the other school. Very problematic, I think, from the standpoint of a Board of Education.
And that's an issue that we have been facing, like with Sangree and Nexton, also Fox Bank, you know, in order to accommodate for all these children. And I think it's crucial that, you know, we begin looking at this point in time to see what we can do to help maintain and retain those developmental areas.
As you continue with growth, Dr. Parker, how could you get away from splitting up? Because you have to grow, you have to build schools, how can you?
Well, what we will look is the student populations in the different neighborhoods. And we will depend on Mr. Miller giving us that information as far as the number of students in each of these neighborhoods. And try not to split a neighborhood up, but reassign the whole neighborhood to the new school or to another school where we're trying to shift populations. But see, this gets into a real critical situation for Boards of Education in trying to make those decisions. Because when you start shifting kids from one school to another school, there's always emotions involved in that, both pro and con. Some folks just don't want to go to that school, then they come to you and want to opt out and go to the original school. It creates a lot of issues for you. And what we're trying to do is provide you with options that you can look at as far as decision-making. And we didn't give you any specifics related to Berkeley County when we put these up here right now, because you need, as board members, you need to be able to look at those and critique those, as board members, to look at the pros and cons before you ever put it into the public.
I appreciate that insight into this and retaining that insight as you do these studies, I really do appreciate that. I think it's imperative that we, you know, put this at the top of our list when we get ready to do these new schools. I mean, we've got to think about the community that we're serving. So I know in my community, you know, they're a family, it's a community, it's a family. And I know that some of my parents would be very upset if we started splitting kids up, so.
And we talk sometimes in the business about aligned feeder system, that your feeder system aligns with one high school, all the kids in this elementary, this middle school go to one high school.
Right, right.
And we have split feeder systems, you have elementary schools that are split, go to one middle school, another middle school, and then go to different high schools. If you can have the aligned feeder system, that is the ideal to have. Now, the key question is, as growth comes into Berkeley County, are you going to be able to maintain an aligned feeder system? And with all the other components that we've talked about, are you going to be able to maintain? maintain that kind of, um, systematic, um, approach to deal with the growth that's going to be coming here? This is a real unique situation, uh, to Berkeley County. And it's imperative that you look at it now and look at your options now and move forward with those options in a very thoughtful manner. Uh, because you, you're going to be hit with this for a long, long time. And Mike takes this out with the 10 years and it's going, he's going to be eliminating one year, adding another year for you. And this will be a continual process that will be brought to you for a board consideration.
I think, based on the schematics and, and just what I've seen thus far, is that the majority of the growth is on the Kane Bay side of the county in terms of high school, given you showed a number between Berkeley and Kane Bay. How far down, 176, does Berkeley County actually goes in far as ends? Or would it be almost more conducive to build a new high school in between Kane Bay and Berkeley somehow, from what I'm, I'm, I mean, because of Nexton area and et cetera, et cetera? But I know that Kane Bay goes all the way down. I'm trying to look at where can a high school come in in between those two development? Because it appears that that's where a lot of it is, is, is happening there. And as it applies to Hannah Hand and Goose Creek with a new middle school, we know then that we would have to do a different attendance line for Goose Creek and Hannah Hand to make sure we can, you know, manage that, that accommodation. But of course, when you go to the Philip Simmons community, it's very different because it's new and we know that the massive amount of growth that is being taking place in the Ken Hoy plantation and development is a little bit simple, I think. But when you're dealing with Kane Bay and that area particularly, that's where most of the growth is coming at. And also, I guess you've got to consider 52 as well and how that will, you know, correlate with Berkeley High and a new high school with Kane Bay. But I mean, as, as, I don't think it's very difficult for high schools a lot of time as it is for elementary schools. Because parents, kind of like once students move on to high school, if it's a new high school, most time everybody's excited about going to that new school as well.
We, we're going to be bringing you information that will answer the questions that you have there, Mr. Wright. Uh, and I think it will, it, it'll give you some insights into possibly where that school could be cited, looking down the road, uh, with the 10-year model here.
Well, those forecasting numbers on the previous screens, that kind of gave us a little insight there, I think, as to what to expect as far as what will be needed for high schools and middle schools in the different areas. I think that's very telling and it will be very helpful.
One of the challenges in Berkeley County is geography. And it's something that you just, you can't move away from.
Right.
So, um, the, the, the data tables tell us a certain side of the picture and then we have to look at the map and, and the geography of, of the place too, to see about accessibility, infrastructure and things like that.
I heard you mention about a, a, a fee on new homeowners or what have you. I mean, the school district, I mean, that would be more in line with Berkeley County or County Council or County Supervisor. Is that, is that's not something that, because I don't think we have that autonomy to do that anymore. And then you talked about the one, the one cent sales tax. How is that, how would that work currently now? Because I was wondering if a municipality or county currently has a one cent or a half a cent sales tax on their current book, would we have to wait until the county is done with that? Or can you add another one cent sales tax on top of that for new schools and apply just for, you know, school district?
I, I think you need to talk to your legal counsel about those kind of issues.
That's the.
What is most optimum? I'm sorry, go ahead.
The one cent sales tax, all governed by statute, based on the number of tourism dollars and that sort of thing that comes in. I think Charleston and Ory are the only two counties that qualify for it, but there's been suggestions.
I'm not talking about that particular one. I'm speaking about the one cent sales tax that the county currently has on the book now to deal with infrastructure and road and highway improvement.
Yeah.
I'm talking about that one specifically. I'm not talking about the accommodation one cent sales tax. I'm just talking more in reference to.
The idea, the idea that's been floated and that I've heard would be to change the legislation based on like number of students and that sort of thing. So the, the school district would qualify to, to levy a one cent sales tax. In terms of the impact fees, the impact fee statute was just amended to allow school districts to do impact fees, but it's all in combo with the county. So it would be something we'd have to work with the county. Yeah, but that seems to be a good funding source.
And Mr. Wright, I, the only, I just threw those out as possible options to consider. Uh, impact fees, something we used in North Carolina. I'm not familiar with impact fees on new construction being used in South Carolina, just not familiar with it. But it is an option that can be used and it places some of the burden on expansion of schools and the financing of schools on the new people coming into, uh, this district that would be utilizing the services of the district.
Absolutely.
Well, I can tell you right off the bat, I would be strongly opposed to a bond referendum. I think this county's been through enough as far as that goes. I would be strongly opposed to it.
Yeah, and the only reason I put that out, that, that's an option.
Right.
That's an option that you have. And you've got to decide which option fits you the best or which two options or three options would fit this board, uh, as far as your decision making in the future. The only thing I want you to understand, from, from my perspective as your consultant, is that there's going to have to be some decisions made pretty quickly to move into a direction of how you're going to pay for the schools.
Okay.
And the only reason why I just, I just talked about that is because you mentioned it and I just wanted to make sure that there was some clarity.
Sure.
And, and, and we were having that discussion in reference to the one cent sales tax. Because I can recall a while ago, when there was a one cent sales tax that was currently on the book with the county, that we could not do the same thing. You couldn't have two entity, I think, in the county with different types of taxes on the book at the same time. Now, maybe legislation has changed since that time, but I do remember, I recall, you know, that, because that, when you were here, Dr. Parker, we were talking about perhaps doing the one cent sales tax.
That's right.
So that, you know, most people will have a shared experience in purchasing and paying for the schools and particularly folk who were moving into the district at a rapid rate that we had out before. So that's why I just thought that I'd touch on.
That's right. Well, I, I think that kind of discussion is valuable in moving forward. You're going to have to have these kind of discussions among yourselves in making decisions. The one thing we want to give you is the best data that we can give you in order to move into a direction of making a decision for the future.
And it's always, and it's most time, it's always easy, certainly, to pass a one cent or half cent sales tax, assess that, you know, then of course bond referendum. And I think we would want to do anything that would favor the taxpayers or the citizens of Berkeley County that they buy into and everybody would feel comfortable doing so.
Well, the idea with the one cent sales tax is you, with the tourists coming into the district, visitors into the district are helping the taxpayers to pay for their new schools.
Right.
It makes a lot of sense and where it's being used, I think it's being used very successfully. And, uh, Dr. Ingram has got experience with it from, uh, his tenure in Darlington County.
Worked well there.
He just makes a county employee.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. Miller? And again, we're going to provide you with all of the charts so that you can see them. I know it was difficult to see them here. And I'm going to go over a couple of things with you as far as the out of capacity issues are concerned right now with, with the 12-day, uh, data that we have currently.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add thank you for all this discussion, especially Frank Mack, because as a newer school board member, this is all very eye-opening. And I was wondering where we were going to come up with the money. So, thank you all. Thank you guys for providing the data.
I got it right here. I got it. Thank you, Mike.
Dr. Parker, just a FYI, we've got 11 attendance appeals and expulsion appeal and they're supposed to be back here by 6:30 out of executive session. And we're at 6:03 now, so.
Okay. All right. What I will do is, we will get you some additional information and I, I think the superintendent had indicated to me, he wanted to meet with small groups of board members and provide you with specific data, uh, to look at as far as, uh, opportunities in moving forward with the short term. And also looking at five years down the road and long-term, uh, 10 years down the road. But again, I emphasize to you, there, there's got to be some serious thought and consideration put into how are you going to move forward in paying for the needs that this district is going to have? Because you've got some real challenges here. And I think Mike pointed out to you, uh, your geographical challenges. If, if I were to come in here and just look at this data, I would say, look, you've got empty seats in some schools, all you've got to do is just start shifting students around. Uh, but based on the geographics in the county, you can't do that. You've got to address it in a different way and you, you've got to consider all the different options that may be available to you. And what we want to provide you with are different scenarios, different options to get to where you need to be as, as far as future planning is concerned.
Yeah, I just, I just want to appreciate, I appreciate, uh, Dr. Parker and Mike coming in. As Mike said, I've worked with them before in North Carolina. And we had some different issues, but it's really very powerful when, uh, he would come in courses prior to some of the technology being what it is today. But we would have big charts and different, uh, attendance zones, uh, as Mr. Barrow alluded to, uh, that the board would be able to, uh, make some decisions. And what we often did in that particular district in North Carolina is the board would sometimes come up with a hybrid solution based on local desires and needs. Uh, but that was for district lines. He can provide lots of those options. And I think that gives the board, um, lots of information, is a lot of power and it helps you make decisions based on research as opposed to just flipping a coin or saying, you know, my Uncle Joe has a plot of land over here he'll give us and, you know, without any real thought to, you know, is it really going to be the best expenditure of money to serve the kids that we have? And this, this, what I like is that Mike will be able to up, update these numbers on a regular quarterly basis so that we'll have truly the latest information at our disposal, at your disposal at all times. So I feel, I feel good about that. I've worked in districts that would not go that direction and I've seen examples of new schools being built where they never got more than half full because just there wasn't enough forethought into the, uh, the process. And I commend the board for, um, investing in this process because I think it will pay great dividends down the road.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Yeah, this is just one quick comment on this. This is a lot, Frank, when you've been on the board a lot longer than me, but even since I've been on the board, the data, it seems like we keep getting better and better at planning and coming up with, um, comprehensive data to move us forward. And I heard somebody say, if you, if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. And that's not what we're planning to do in Berkeley County. So thank you for coming together with all the data and, and bringing this before us. At this time, um, I moved agenda item 2A, um, to enter into executive session for discussion of pending employment matters, 11 student attendance appeals and one expulsion appeal. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to return to regular session and would like to state for the record that no action was taken in executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're back in regular session. Please, uh, join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to agenda item 4A, we have no citizen comments for tonight. And so moving to item 5A, um, action required from executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Just skipped something?
Skip.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I'm, I'm going too fast. All right. Um, going back to item 3B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on August 28, 2018. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I made a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. All right, going to 5A. Sorry about that, Penny. Um, any action required from executive session? Is there, are there any motions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, you deny the appeal of student number one and student number two, please.
Second.
We've got a motion to deny the appeals of students numbers one and two. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. The next motion is in the matter of students numbers three, four, and 10. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move that we deny the appeal of student number three, four, and 10.
Second.
We've got a motion to deny the appeals of students numbers three, four, and 10. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to student number five, this matter will be handled administratively. In the matter of student number six, do we have a motion? Or, excuse me, six, yeah, six.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the appeal for student number six.
Second.
We've got a motion to grant the attendance appeal of student number six. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. In the matter of student number seven, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the appeal for student number seven.
Second.
Second.
We've got a motion to grant the attendance appeal of student number seven. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Motion passes. The matter of student number eight, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the appeal for student number eight.
Second. We have a motion to grant the appeal of student number eight. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Motion passes. The matter of student number nine, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the appeal for student number nine.
Second. We have a motion to grant the appeal of student number nine. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Um, we dealt with number 10. Moving to student attendance appeal number 11. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move we deny the appeal for student number 11.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to deny the attendance appeal of student number 11. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, show of hands on that one, what do we have?
What do you want to say, the ayes or the nays?
The nays. So, all right, that motion fails. Um, is there a motion to grant the attendance appeal of student number 11?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the appeal for student number 11.
Second. There's a motion to grant the appeal of student number 11. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. In terms of expulsion appeals, in the matter of student number one, I move that this student be expelled.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion to uphold the appeal, or uphold the expulsion of student number one. Um, all in favor of upholding the expulsion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other action required from executive session? Now move to Agenda Item 6A, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, acting as chair tonight. Thank you very much. First, I would certainly like to thank everyone for their cooperation and understanding with our recent cancellation of schools due to the threat from Hurricane Florence. The Sheriff's Department and local county officials are to be commended for working with our school district to help us through what could have been much worse. Let's all remember our neighbors to the north and help out where we can as they begin the recovery process. Indeed, we were very blessed to be spared that storm. I would certainly like to thank the volunteers and school officials who staff shelters at the following schools, East Creek High, Kane Bay High, Cross High, Berkeley Middle, St. Stevens Elementary, Westview Middle, and Macedonia Middle. In all, our school district provided temporary shelter for over 800 people. I very much appreciate our administrators who served in shelters in their schools and our administrators who stepped up to assist in the shelter even though it wasn't their particular school. All of you were true servant leaders and I commend you for stepping up and making sure your communities were safe and that all of our shelter schools were covered. Some of our principals didn't even leave their campuses during the entire time, so they're to be commended. I did participate in a statewide conference call with State Superintendent Molly Spearman before the storm. We have been instructed to use our predetermined makeup days first. These have already been approved, so they wouldn't require approval next week. Those dates are October 22nd, January 7th, and March 18th. I'm recommending these dates to the board. Also, because we have missed a total of four instructional days, we would like to move our progress report, this will require approval next week, for the first quarter from September 27th to October 2nd. Then we would request that we move the end of the first quarter from the 19th of October to October 23rd and we would like to move the first quarter, quarter report card date from October 25th to October 31st and we'll certainly put that in the form of a motion next week, but that's just adjusting the first quarter to give more instructional time to teachers as they lost four days. High school football will return to regularly scheduled games this coming week. Any games missed last week will attempt to be made up near the end of the season or when the schools who were scheduled to play each other can mutually agree to do so. So that's, that concludes my report for the night, but thank you so much to everybody, any of you in this room who, who helped out during the threat. I'm very confident that if the storm had hit, we would have been very well prepared for what could have been a very bad scene, but we were spared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have sufficient number of people, so we do not need to make temporary committee assignments under Agenda Item 7A. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned and will now move into Ms. Condor's Committee on Academics and Innovation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am now calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there is a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. The first agenda item is the Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for July 2018, Head Start Credit Card Report for July 2018, and a prospective new hires for approval. What is the pleasure of my committee?
Making a motion to approve the Budget Expenditures Report for July 2018, the Head Start Credit Report Card, and the July 2018 prospective new hires.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Second agenda item is the Teacher Forum Update. Teacher Forum Chairman Nick Schneider, you are recognized.
Vice Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Ingram, thank you for having me this evening. Just want to spend a few moments telling you about the last few months for Teacher Forum and some exciting things that we have had a chance to participate in and also some things that we're working on for the, for the future here, so. First of all, we have started a social media presence as a teacher forum. One of the things that, that I had discussed with our committees is that a lot of people, even in our own district, especially teachers, don't even know what Teacher Forum is or that we exist. And so we have, we have a committee that is running these accounts and that is just taking pictures and documenting things that we're doing as a teacher forum so that we can be a little bit more visible in our community and hopefully this will continue to grow. I'm working with the Communications Department through, to help with that as well. Just a kind of quick, quick review here for Teacher Forum. I know most of you have sat through Sharon's presentations before, but since it's, it's been a while since you've heard one, we really hope to represent the voice of, of teachers in every school and also a professional learning community, to be a main line of communication between teachers and the board members and the superintendent and district office and also an agent of change. And so this is how our structure is set up right now. This year, I have the, the pleasure of serving as the Teacher Forum Chair. Emily from Devon Forest is our vice, vice chair. And then we have committees that, that work through us and we answer to, or we communicate through Dr. Gorman as our liaison. So each, each year, Teacher Forum has annual goals and they kind of, they filter through these, these goals here and this is how we build our committees. Each, each month, we meet as a teacher forum and these committees meet together. So we have curriculum and instruction and they, they really help drive some of the PDs, especially on the conference, the conference day in February. We had advocacy and morale, which is definitely an important one in, in education today. We have special events and recognition, communication and political action, scholarships and fundraising, and community outreach. And so as issues, we're focusing on, on issues determining, we had a summer leadership retreat this, this summer, I'll talk about that in just a moment. And also this year's conference, just focusing on creating a meaningful day of learning. This is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've ever had the conference back-to-back years. It's always been every other year, but now we're going to a every-year focus on that. I've only been in the district for four years, so if I misspoke on that, I, I'm sorry, but as far as I know, that's, that's it. So here are some of the things that we are currently doing or will be working on. So each, each meeting, we host a one-minute spotlight, a group of spotlight schools and they tell us about some things within Teacher Forum happening at their own schools, kind of a bragging rights opportunity, but really just a celebration. We, we have, we do our best to have a representative here at every school board meeting so that we can stay up to date on issues and what's taking place within the district. This got, this got actually moved, influenced, I guess, by last week's events, but every year, at the end of the school year, we collect, all the schools donate leftover materials that are usable. We don't, we won't, it's not just a trash, trash dump, you know? But we collect those materials, we bring all those together and then when our pride teachers, our first-year teachers come, we give them big bags and they just get to go through and shop and grab whatever they want for their classrooms. So that was supposed to take place this week, but that's gonna get moved to October, but we have a, over at MenRiv, we have an entire stage full of materials for our, our new teachers. We also assist with recruitment fairs. We helped in the spring. I've already been contacted about helping in the, with the winter recruitment fair and then we will continue this year to help with inductions and receptions for our new Teachers of the Year. I'm pretty excited about the next one. Last year, we raised enough money through our T-shirt sales at the, at the conference to award, I think, 22 scholarships for our teachers within our district and they, we have a process that they apply for these and then we have a team that chooses the scholarship recipients from all over the district. And so up to, up to $450 and so we had, we were able to give away 22 of those and these are used for field trips, they're used for classroom material, alternate seating, all kinds of great things. What I'm most excited about is that I didn't know that I was responsible for ordering all of this material for these teachers and we now have a plan, because I didn't like that system, so we now have a plan worked out where this is gonna work at the school level and, and come through our account in the future, so it'll make it easier on future District Teachers of the Year, I believe. And so also increasing awareness for current educational issues. So some of my goals as the Teacher Forum Chair, just to be a positive voice in the profession, to encourage great teachers to become teacher leaders in our schools and communities, to help make our district even more desirable than it already is and encouraging our district to work and to bridge gaps between educators, local policymakers, and community members. One of the ways I think I tried to help bridge those gaps this summer for our Teacher Forum Retreat, the, actually the first row that you see there are all local businesses. So our two, our two-day Teacher Forum Retreat, I built the first day out of what could we really work with in our community in terms of understanding what is needed. And all of us as teachers pretty much knew what they were gonna say, but I think it was validating to hear from the business world what they needed. So we had representatives from Google, MUSC, Santee Cooper, a private entrepreneur, Column Construction, and Nucor Steel and a few others that came that day. They sat on a panel and they just spoke to us. We had some predetermined questions and so it was a great opportunity. At the end of that, I actually invited all of our business leaders to go out and sit at the tables with the teachers and have conversations about what was taking place in their schools and their, their classrooms and things, just to have, start to bridge on the communication. There's a book called Schools Can't Do It Alone and, no, that's not the one I'm thinking of. Well, I can't remember at the moment, but Jamie Volmer, I think it's Schools Can't Do It Alone. Jamie Volmer wrote, yeah, that's, thank you. He has this, this graphic in there that says you cannot get to A, from A to B without going through C and the C stands for community. And so I think we understand that and just partnerships that we already have are great, but as, as the Teacher Forum Chair, I want to encourage our teachers to seek relationships, not just financially, but to seek relationships with the community to help invite them into the classroom, you know, support with volunteer hours, all these types of things. And many of these things are happening already, but I want to just help further that. So that was the first day of our summer retreat. This is just another visual here for you, kind of let you see my decoration skills there with the tablecloths. I was real, real proud of my color coordination, so. The second day, you know, I had to follow up Sharon Blackwood last year and I was, I was thinking to myself, "I'll never be able to do what she's done," but color coordination was a, a highlight for me. The second day of our retreat, I invited a group of local leaders from South Carolina Future Minds, district office personnel, administrators. We had Larry, Larry Dean from the Citadel's Education Department and I had them speak specifically about ways that we could be leaders as teachers, not necessarily more than what we already do, but where we're already at, realizing the power that we have in leadership, not just in our classroom, but in our communities. And so that panel spoke and we had sort of a similar model both days. And so there you can see, Mr. Ramsey got to join us for lunch that, that day, so we, he got to meet some of the, some of the participants in our, our panel. And Mr. Sanders also donated a picture there for one of our, our drawings that we had. As a result of that summer retreat, Nucor and Boeing invited Teacher Forum to come visit their facilities and I only got some pictures here with Nucor. Boeing was a little more intense about the picture-taking, but I got some, I got some, we got a chance to get a few pictures, but really we had about 15 teachers that got to go from Teacher Forum just to, just to visit and have conversations, candid conversations about soft skills in the workplace and take that information back to our teachers. We all know it needs to happen. It's so validating to see it and to, to hear it, not as second or third-hand information, but straight from the source. Our first Teacher Forum meeting was in August and we invited Kathy Manis from PSTA. She came and spoke to us about educational policy, what some things that are currently happening at the state level and, and just told us, you know, what's, what's, what's being voted for this year and those types of things. So in closing, I don't know if you remember Sharon's, Sharon's theme that she selected was "Be the One" and, and I liked that and I didn't want to, I didn't want to just cut away from that totally, so I just, I just added to it a little bit and, and I added forwards, not backwards. And so my thinking for that theme for us this year is really twofold. I've heard Dr. Ingram say already that we have to educate our children for their future, not our past. And so that's been something that we've, we've talked about quite a bit in Teacher Forum, that we've got to be thinking about what they need, not what we've received. And secondly, I'm gonna go, go English teacher on you here for just a minute. And so Emily Dickinson has this poem called "Plank to Plank" and I'll, I'll just recite it for you, not, I'm not gonna get all theatrical or anything, but it says, "I stepped from plank to plank so slow and cautiously. The stars about my head I felt about my feet, the sea. I knew not but the next would be my final inch. This gave me that precarious gait some call experience." Her message, there's a lot of messages in there, but the main message is that she kept moving forward. She kept moving forward and as she moved forward, she gained experience. But my favorite two lines in that poem are "The stars about my head I felt about my feet, the sea." And I think what that means is that she was, she was a dreamer. She was thinking about the future. She was thinking about the what-ifs, the possibilities. And as I've already heard as a theme this evening, we have a lot of future to be thinking about and discussing, how we build, not just building school buildings, but how we build and design these buildings, how we design these classrooms, what they're built. Are we, are we focused on the future of education? And so I just, the, the other part of that is about my feet, the sea. Wavering, not steady, uncertain at times. You know, you just, it's not always a sure path, it's scary, it's not, it's not as calm as you might like it to be, but that did not prevent her from moving forward, the, the speaker of that poem. So forwards, not backwards is kind of just a focus for us as a Teacher Forum. Let's keep pressing forward. I'm challenging our teachers in Teacher Forum to be talking about communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, to work that into their classrooms. Many of them are doing it far greater than, than I am, but this is our focus for the year, so I thank you for your time and look forward to continuing to serve, serve this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I'm, I'm feeling very optimistic about what you guys are doing this year. I think that we're gonna go far this year, I really do. Thank you again. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make? We don't need a motion on this presentation that Mr. Schneider gave us.
I just want to say thank you for your passion and just being so inspiring to me, I'm sure to all the other board members, getting out in the community. Just thank you so much for what you do.
And if you need any help with color coordinating, we could certainly, certainly find you some assistance in that area. Again, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting.
So moved.
Alright, I heard a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are now adjourned.
Now move to the Finance and Human Resources Committee. Mr. Ramsey?
I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare there is a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. To reiterate what Mike said earlier, Chairman Wofford was unable to join us tonight as she has experienced a death in her family. As this is an important night, she wanted the board and everyone gathered here this evening to know that she would not have been asked evening to know that she would not have been absent if not for this family emergency. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and with her family now and in the coming days. First on the agenda item is the superintendent's performance evaluation. Reverend Span, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey. Our heart goes out to Chairman Wofford and her family for the loss of their loved ones. And we certainly want to keep her and the family in our prayers. Due to Chairman Wofford's unexpected absence, I am delivering a report regarding superintendent performance evaluation based on the cumulative response of the board. On August 7th, we held a board workshop during which Dr. Ingram presented his McReel Administrative Evaluation Self-Assessment and evidence to support his assessment. The rigorous evaluation involved category, including purposeful community managing chair, focus on leadership and management. Dr. Ingram came to Berkeley County during very tumultuous, turbulent time and has helped us continue to right the ship. He has been one of the most active superintendent attending multiple and diverse school events, hosting conversation in our community. He has hired qualified staff who are necessary to improve the district financial stability, worked to put necessary policies and procedures in place that the district was lacking. Each of our nine board members complete an evaluation form on Dr. Ingram, review the evidence, and provide their feedback to Chairman Wofford. Some board members rated Dr. Ingram higher than he rated himself, which I think is an illustration of our approval of the work he has done and our confidence that he will continue to move Berkeley County forward. Chairman Wofford will lead a more robust discussion regarding their evaluation next week at the full meeting of the board. At this time, I move to rate Dr. Ingram as proficient based on cumulative board feedback from the McReel Evaluation Tool.
I have just a few brief comments before we vote on the motion. And first, my comment is, thank you, Dr. Ingram.
Don't you need a second?
Want a second before you begin commenting?
Oh, do? Okay. My second. Now I will make some comments. Thank you. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Ingram for all his hard work and, and leading this board. Because as many of us know, we would never imagine some of these situations and the obstacles this district has had to deal with. And from my perspective, Dr. Ingram has done exceedingly well, and we have been blessed to have him as our superintendent during this time, simply because if we had not had someone of your caliber and someone of your experience and someone of your work ethic, I'm really afraid of where we might have ended up. As far as commenting on this evaluation, to be clear, this is an evaluation that Dr. Ingram did present to the board, and we did agree that it made a lot of sense. From the standard of, he's been here such a short time that this evaluation really is based on a growth model. It needs to fully be understood that it is a starting point. And also, from my perspective, as a board member, I have to directly be tied, and I have to directly evaluate my own performance, just as the general public or the district or the educators might, might want to judge me as, as far as how we are, myself and as us as a board are performing. So however the superintendent performs, I think that myself as a board member, I have, I have skin in the game. So I'm real excited that we have Dr. Ingram. I'm, I'm real excited that we got this evaluation. But to be clear, it is a beginning. And to be even further clearer, we will move forward, and we will improve, and we will have positive change. So I'm extremely optimistic. So at this time, I call the vote. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And just to clarify, I don't know if we clarified as far as, the motion was to rate Dr. Ingram as proficient based on the cumulative board feedback from the McReel Evaluation Tool. That was the, the motion that we've made. Moving on, just.
I would just like to say publicly, thank you, and the blessing is truly mine. I need you worse than you need me. We'll talk about that sometime. But I really appreciate everybody in this room. You all have made my life, life richer, Sue's life richer, and we just love being here. So thank you. The blessing's ours.
Thank you. Second agenda item is the reading of Policies for Adoption, Revision, and Deletion, Sex and G Personnel. Dr. Karen Whitley, you are recognized.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Superintendent Ingram, and board members. We are asking for second reading of Select Personnel Policies for Adoption, Revision, and Deletion. To revise, GBC Staff Compensation, Payroll Practices, and Deductions. GCOA Evaluation of Instructional Staff. To adopt, GBL Sick Leave. On page one of the policy, a revision has been made that allows all of our employees to use sick leave for illness, injury, or mental slash dental appointment of child, spouse, or parent that cannot be scheduled outside of working hours. This change to the draft was made based on feedback from our employees. GBN Family Medical Leave Act. The revision for Policy GBN Family Medical Leave Act can be found on page three. The part concerning the spouse's share in FMLA was taken out. Each spouse will have 12 weeks. This revision was also made due to feedback from our employees. GBN Military Leave. GBO Vacation Leave and Holidays. GBP Emergency Catastrophic Leave Program. We had a couple of revisions. The revision for Policy GBP Emergency Catastrophic Leave Program can be found on page two. The administration of the E/CLP will be under the direction of the board appointed by the Chief Human Resources Officer instead of elected, of elected from the participants. This has been the practice in the past. Another revision for this policy can also be found on page two. The sentence, "This deduction will automatically be transferred to the E/CLP during each subsequent enrollment period until the employee indicates in writing that he or she no longer wishes to be a participating member of the E/CLP," has been removed. This is not an option with our payroll system. Each employee will receive a membership application in which he or she may elect to join or decline the opportunity. GBQ Other Leave. This draft reflects a change based on staff input, sick leave for care of immediate family members to include spouse, child, and parents. It's no longer in this policy, but has been added to GBL Sick Leave. To delete, Exhibit GCC-GDC-E. Employee Rights and Responsibilities under FMLA. Exhibit GCC-GDC-E2. Professional Improvement Leave of Absence Application. Exhibit GCC-GDC-E3. Certification of Physician or Practitioner. Policy GCC-GDC. Staff Leaves and Absence. GCD-GDD. Staff Vacation Holidays. Policy GCQF. Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of Instructional Staff. Policy GDQA. Support Staff Reduction in Force. Rule GCC-GDC-R. Staff Leaves and Absence. And GCK-R Professional. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. Do we have any discussion? At this time, I move to approve the second reading for the revision of the two policies mentioned, the adoption of the six policies mentioned, and the deletion of the 11 policies mentioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved by a vote of two to zero. Third agenda item is the first reading to adopt Policy IKFC and Rule IKFC-R. Dr. Whitley?
Thank you. We are asking for first reading approval of IKFC-Eployability Credential and IKFC-R Employability Credential Administrative Rule. The model policy and rule were sent to us by South Carolina School Boards Association. Dr. Gorman, Dr. Worth, and Dr. McLaren have worked on this information. This South Carolina High School credential offers applicable students with disabilities the opportunity to work towards a uniform state-recognized credential. The uniform state-recognized South Carolina High, High credential is aligned to a newly-created course of study for these students with disabilities whose individualized education program, IEP, team determines this course of study is appropriate. The purpose of the South Carolina High School credential is to provide job readiness opportunities for students throughout the state, ensure they have evidence of employability skills, and honor the work they have undertaken in our public schools. Students in the 2020 graduating class and beyond are eligible for participation in the Employability Credential Program. Are there any questions?
I made the motion to approve the first reading to adopt Policy IKFC and Rule IKFC-R Employability Credential. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved by two to zero. Dr. Whitley?
Thank you. We are asking for first reading approval of GBP-E. Application for Use of ECLP. This is the application that correlates with the GBP Emergency Catastrophic Leave Program policy that we are presenting tonight for second reading. Are there any questions?
I made the motion to approve first reading to adopt Exhibit GBP-E. Application for Emergency Catastrophic Leave Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved by two to zero. Dr. Whitley?
Okay. Thank you. We are presenting the newly-approved, newly-revised Berkeley County School District 2018-19 Salary Book for Revision. The following revisions are requested. On page four, the safety OSHA officer and risk manager were in the wrong salary schedule section. We've placed them in the correct one now. And page 28, technology associate was added to pay classification B. Are there any questions?
I make a motion to approve the revision of 2018-2019 Salary Book as presented.
Second. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved by a vote of two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. At this time, we would like to do the sixth agenda item, which is out-of-state travel. Ashley Smith, you are recognized.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Dr. Ingram, and members of the board. Administration is requesting approval of the out-of-state travel as presented.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved by a vote of two to zero. Next is the seventh agenda item, is the financial update. Ms. Smith, you are recognized.
Thank you. I will be, I will be presenting the July 2018 Financial Update. I do want to point out that I found an error in the presentation earlier today, so later this afternoon, it was uploaded to Board Docs. So the corrected presentation is now on Board Docs. In the district's general fund budget, we received $24,884 in local revenue and $10.5 million in state revenue. During the month of July, expenditures totaled approximately $7.9 million. The majority of the expenditures were on salaries and benefits and purchased services. The $3.7 million in purchased services is mostly consistent of utilities and insurance. The special revenue fund received $37,249 in state and federal sources and expended $491,910 during the month of July, mostly in purchased services. The $302,000 in purchased services is mainly attributed, attributed to encumbrances for technology purchases and site licenses. The district received $783,000 in revenue and had expenditures of $409,000 in the EIA budget, with the majority spent in purchased services. For the district's capital projects budget, we carried over $2.6 million for projects within the district and expended and encumbered $2.5 million on projects throughout the district during the month of July. At the beginning of this month, we closed on a bond and received $20.5 million that will be available for capital projects, as well as the overage in the bond referendum account. In October, a capital plan will be presented to the board with a clear explanation on how the $20.5 million will be spent. As discussed at the last board meeting, we are over budget in the bond referendum account. As of July 2018, we are over by $10.6 million, including expenditures and encumbrances remaining to complete Fox Bank Elementary, Bowen's Corner, and the Berkeley Education Center. A portion of the $20.5 million from the sale of the general obligation bond will help cover the overages in this account, excuse me, in this fund. The child nutrition budget has received $155,000 in revenues and has expenditures of $212,000 during the month of July. Thank you.
Any questions for the committee, Reverend Span?
Yes. You said there's an overage. Tell me again how you expect to cover the overage?
The overage will be covered by the bond that was closed on early this month. We received $20.5 million, and it will cover capital projects as well as the overage in the bond referendum account.
So our projected, I'm sorry, our projected spending for this portion of the year is over by that amount?
Yes, the amount has already been encumbered. Those are, that is to complete those three projects, Fox Bank, Bowen's Corner, and Berkeley Education Center.
Forgive me, we probably discussed this before, but did we, did we estimate it to lower, or what's, why the, the gap? Is, is there a reason for it to be so wide?
I lost, I was in Pittsburgh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, my fault, I didn't quite hear that. Pretty much, Mike.
What's, what's the, why is there such a big gap? Why is there such a big deficit? Legal term is cluster.
It's cluster.
Honestly, this was before my tenure here, but it was not budgeted correctly. The budget was not completed in the system as it should have been, and money was not tracked as it should have been. The expenditures were not being followed, so we found ourselves with a deficit.
You put that rather nicely.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.